Across all of our systems, we're doing some system redesigns. We're doing a large one in Syracuse right now, a Swigawood Fulton. We're getting ready to launch in January. We did a system redesign in the city of Rome about a year and a half ago. We're kind of taking a look at our systems and trying to provide service that we think is going to increase ridership, meet the needs of the communities better in general. Things have changed post-COVID. Ridership's a little different. Travel habits are a little different. So we've kind of relooked at all of our, all of our systems and we're going to take a look at other systems as we go forward. But right now, we're going to talk about what's going on here in Swigawood County first. As we have found across our service areas that our, our bus routes can be complicated, which makes our schedules complicated. And when all this is complicated, it really doesn't entice individuals to use the system because it becomes confusing. You gotta have a schedule. And we're looking to simplify our service area, our services across all the areas in which we, which we serve. In Rome, we took six routes and we reduced them down to three routes that run more consistently. In Swigawood, we're taking about seven or eight different routes and we're going to reduce them down to three routes that will run more consistently with better frequency. And we're doing something similar here in Fulton. So the, our goals of our system redesigns in general are to simplify the routing to increase the frequency of trips. That is really important in public transportation for, especially for transit-dependent individuals. Frequency, frequency, frequency is the correlation of real estate, you know, location, location, location. If the bus only runs once or twice a day, it's no good to anybody. We need to increase the frequency of our service. And we want to try to make the system more user-friendly. We do that by simplifying the routing, making it easy to understand, making, trying to make the routes almost intuitive where you don't need a schedule, where they do the same thing all the time and you don't figure out, is this the trip that goes here or is this the trip that goes there? We want to eliminate that type of confusion amongst the, the population so they look at it and they can understand the system. Just the public outreach we've done, we've, we've had some operations that we began probably, I think the first operation we did was probably almost a year ago, but was recently in May. We were on-site at Swigawood's campus. We did some stuff at Towpath Towers. We had a meeting at Fulton Mills. We were in Commons Center in Swigawood. And we've gone back and forth in all cases and tried to look at revisions after we've had some initial feedback from the community. Made some changes in Swigawood on what part of what we're, we're doing there. And we've looked at Fulton and made a couple of weeks here and there in Fulton. Yeah, that's the public operations that we've done, options, public hearings. We've also revealed the emails and phone calls from individuals as well. So it's not just the in-person feedback that we receive, but we're also receiving feedback from individuals over the other resources that we have. This is a system for Swigawood. You're also not interested in that, so let's get to what you guys are here for and that is Fulton. So this, uh, this is the current Fulton system map. We look at this, it's not a very consistent bus route system. It travels here sometimes, it travels down here sometimes, and you have to know exactly where you're going or you can be on the bus going the wrong direction. Some things have changed in this community in particular. KU College used to carry forty to fifty people a day to KU College. That's now less than a person a day. Part of that is because the enrollment is down, but a lot of it is because they do a lot of online learning now. So the need to get to the campus on an hourly basis doesn't exist anymore. So we've been able to change that. And that by not having to go there, we're still serving it, just not on separate routes. We'll serve it on the Mexico route and also, that's the route that goes to DSS. And also on our service that connects us with Syracuse will also get students to that, the college via those routes. We found that most of the people that were going there were using those routes anyway. They weren't really traveling from within the city of Fulton across town to get to KU College. This is the new service area where you'll see the dotted lines. These are areas in which we have removed buses from that area. And the reason is basically there's less than a person per day that are boarding these locations. The one exception we can talk about is Fulton Mills. That we have some challenges there from a safety perspective. We can get that into that in a minute. But most of these areas here, there just isn't much ridership for whatever reason. We used to have more ridership down through here that has evaporated. Same in here. And there are some locations here where we don't have much ridership, but you're still close enough where we think you can walk to the bus relatively ease and still get a bus that runs more frequently than this current service run. So these areas right here, you may have buses that go there currently twelve, thirteen times a day. We're looking to provide a few bus routes that operate twenty-one times a day. That's more frequency, better options for the user. It's, it's not a decrease in the overall level, level of service. It's the same. It's just reallocated and cut up a different way for, for the community. So this would be again, the proposed new system area. The Fulton Mills area, it's just this turn in here. It's difficult for us to make this turn. We swing out to the opposing lane a lot. In the winter time, it becomes treacherous. Our drivers are very concerned about the activity that occurs along this here with this parking and also the circle here where there's just a lot of people that congregate on a regular, on a regular basis. Our drivers are fearful of making that turnaround there with a large vehicle, that there's going to be some, there's going to be some accidents or something worse. So we're really concerned about operating this area. We met with the people there. We understand their concerns. We've looked at it. It's just, it's a tough decision for us. By serving the location in front here, we're not, we're making the service so no one ever has to cross the street to access the bus from Fulton Mills. We're actually making a circle here to make sure that when we're traveling in this direction that we're always, we're always going to pick up on this side of the road. So we won't be traveling here to go here. We'll actually loop, pick people up and then loop again and go travel out onto Walmart. So have them point you board on the same side of the street. So again, what we've done is we've streamlined the route for more service to the popular destinations that people serve. We've discontinued the service area with location where there's less than a person a day. We do have some, Swigawood County Public Transit has helped us out. They provide some services of a helpless fill in the gaps if there are individuals that need, need service. I talked about the KU College still being available on the Mexico and two forty-six. The frequency for us in the city of Fulton will be eighty minutes. That means that bus will just turn every eighty minutes. It's going to be at the same location every eighty minutes. It's not a perfectly clockwork. Boy, we'd love to get to sixty minutes, but we'd have to cut more of it out. We don't want to do that. We want to serve it. So it's at least on an eighty-minute move. And we're going to have, since we currently have just one seat rides between the east and west and reduce the need for transfers from one side of the city to another. This is a proposed actual schedule. So we wanted to make sure that we provided you all with an opportunity to take a look at what the actual schedule would look like. And that's something we've been hard work at and put together the schedule that our show development team has done a great job with. So you can take a look at what it would look like. And I think, is there another slide or is that? Okay. So this is, this is what the schedule would look up, look like. It's easier to see. It's easier to understand. And we think the frequency will be, will benefit the overall general population. We know we can't do everything for everybody. We're trying to kind of reach a compromise in some areas. We're, we're trying to do the best we can with, with our existing resources to provide service that's more frequent or user-friendly. I can say that in Rome, the fixed route service that we have there, which is what we call that bus that runs on a schedule along a fixed route, which is what this is, the ridership has gone up twenty-two percent in the first year of the service because we believe, and this is something that we believe in the transit industry, is that if you're consistent and if you're on time and your system is somewhat intuitive, more people will use it. If they have to jump through hoops to figure out where your bus is going and if it's going to go here, you know, all it takes is one time you get on that bus and you make a mistake and you think the bus is going to where you want to go and it's not, many people just throw their hands up. And we don't want to do that. We want to be consistent in our service. With that, I will open this up for questions that you have about what we've done. Yes, sir? Wait, what is your name?
David.
David, thank you.
Could you go back to the system map, the route map?
Sure.
So I saw this, I had an email, I'm on the, I think it was the transportation by your community.
Yes, yep.
So I looked at this and I thought, oh, you go from the east side to the west side, you have to change buses at Towpath. Then I'm thinking, that makes no sense. So could you pick a point, maybe Towpath and go around the west side, then over to the east side?
Sure. I'm entering Jameson. So, so where are you looking to go? Sorry, sir.
Well, just, uh, the whole route. Be sorry.
Okay. So if you were to get on at Walmart, let's say you've just done some shopping at Walmart and you live out on Fourth Street over here, okay? You're going to get on at Walmart and it's going to come in Hannibal, go through Fulton Commons. Okay, that's the area there. Out Broadway, past the Ballhead Point Pavilion. Continue on Broadway. It's going to come up West First Street, past Fulton Mills. Go through the Price Chopper parking lot, across the North Bridge. I'm not sure of the name of that street. Right off South, um, West, East First, sorry. Continue, then, once it gets to Towpath. So that was the fifteen route. Once it gets to Towpath, it becomes the fourteen route. Continues on, loops here, comes up Room Three or Forty-One. Right on Harrison. And then I think this is Sixth. And then we're out here to Room Three, to Pathfinder Courts, and continuing on back to Broadway and out Fourth, to your destination on Fourth.
Okay. And then we continue on back over to Walmart?
So yeah, it just loops down here past the Medical Center. This is what we call the end of the line for the fourteen. So this is the end of the outbound trip. And now you're starting your trip that goes back to Towpath. This reverses the route. So there's no more looping. There's no more circles where you get on one spot, you gotta go all the way around and get back to the other spot. Everything is out and back. But you continue on Pathfinder, up through here, just reverse of the route that you adjusted, Towpath, now it becomes a fifteen. Comes this way. This is where it does the loop for Fulton Mills that we built. So we're always coming on the door side of Fulton Mills. You come here and before you pass Fulton Mills, you're making a right here and then on Four Hees and then a left on Fourth, a left on Broadway, a left on First, stopping door side of Fulton Mills, then doing that loop again. Left on Four Hees, left on Fourth, right on Broadway, out through Fulton Commons, up above.
That's what I expected you to say.
Yep.
I said, I first looked at that map, I said, oh, there's one bus route here on the west side, one here. I said, will the bus change to Towpath? And then it makes no sense. I'll bet you it changes from the blue route to the purple route. Same bus.
That's correct. There's one bus running around the city. We have other buses that come through. So the Mexico bus, yeah, I can tell you. The Mexico bus will come in, do its thing, it goes to COVID KU College. We talked about how that's one of the two routes that'll serve KU College there. Then it'll go to Towpath. And sometimes it has forty minutes before it does its next Mexico trip. So it will spend forty minutes doing service in Fulton. It'll do maybe a full route outbound of inbound of fifteen because most people, most of our communities, we find people want to go to Walmart. So when we're going to add service somewhere, it's generally going to be to a Walmart. End of lines are generally going to be Walmart's in a lot of our places. So when we find that we have extra time for the Mexico bus in the city of Fulton, we send it to Walmart then, if we have forty minutes. If we only have twenty, we send it right to Walmart. We have to do what's called a deadhead where it'll just drive out there and then it'll do the inbound part of the trip, bringing people back from Walmart and getting them to the, to the Commons Center.
That's exactly what I expected you to say.
Yeah, it's intuitive, right? That's, and that's what Steve talked about. And that's what we're talking about when we do system redesigns. It should be something that you or anyone can just look at and be like, yes, now I get it. It makes sense, right? It makes sense that the city, the bus just continues on through the city.
As long as someone doesn't make a mistake like I did, I think there's two separate routes you got to change buses.
That's where the drivers come in handy. The drivers are going to be like, where are you going? Stay on the bus. Yeah. We have great drivers. And our schedule is set up where it'll show it continues on. So on our schedule, you'll know that if you need to get from Walmart to Fourth Street, you can just stay on the bus. Yes?
My question is, when the Mexico bus comes in and does the loop over there, you still have the regular Fulton bus going? So at that point, there's still two buses in the city?
There will be two buses at that point, yes. There are, so the one bus that comes in, so there's one bus that comes down first thing in the morning and starts its Fulton service. That driver gets like a forty-minute break at Walmart from like eleven to eleven forty-five or something like that. And during that time, the Mexico bus is doing service in the city at that point.
So at that point, there's still only one bus in the city?
For that, at that particular time, yeah, because the driver has to take a break.
Yes.
Yes?
I've got a two, maybe three-pronged question.
Sure.
It's, you've cut out, I mean, Walmart and Price Chopper certainly are probably the primary shopping spots, but you used to have buses that would drive by Save Lot as well as Aldi. And now those are no longer options. I come office for the aging and it's all a concern and I, you know, sure they get off the bus and walk there, but a hell of a layer of disabled people that might not be really a walking distance for them. So that's the first part of that. The second part is when you had your meetings at the Mills and Towpath, did those, were those issues that were brought up? And the third, you would also mention how you're working with the county's mobility. Are they going to be able to help people who want to shop in those locations?
I'll go reverse for it. Sure. The county transportation, they have a, a on-demand service that they, that they operate that will serve areas where we do not serve. That is what their goal is. Heather Snow operates that. She's, she's tremendous. We work in it and she's, she's been recently appointed to our board, so she's my boss. So we make sure that we're in constant contact. If there's issues that come, that arise, that we have some service, we'll, we'll handle it. Question regarding Aldis. I'll tell you that the service to Aldis or any, any location that was taken away because ridership wasn't there. People aren't currently using it. So if you're not currently using it, it's hard. I mean, do we serve the one person who wants to go to Aldis or everybody else who wants to go to the other locations? It's, it's a tough decision. Sorry, the third question was, oh, the meeting at Fulton Mills. So yeah, they're not happy with us. They're, I'm not, I'm not going to sugarcoat it, they're not happy about it. But there were some misconceptions on public service operates. They also, they believe that the buses at every bus stop just stop to wait for people to show up. That's not what we do. We wait, we wait and see if there's people there, if there's nobody there, we continue on. We have told them that we will, we will install, we have real-time information, access to information systems to limit the amount of time that they would have to wait for a bus. And also we would put a shelter in that location so anybody who's waiting there would be, be covered from the rain, snow or whatever, the wind would be most, is most concerning. So we will offer some mitigation elements to that, that population as well. Currently, they are using the front stop. We only go back here five times a day. The rest of the time you travel is to this location now. It's currently being used. It's, we, we, what we don't want to do is bait a situation in Fulton. We just started a Fulton service about a year, about nine months ago. There's a hospital there. They said, we really need you to drop people off in the front service. They said, we have some concerns. We have larger buses and there's, and they don't take care and they don't remove vehicles from that location. So the alternative is that if you get into a circle, you see somebody in circles, you have a truck in a circle, you can't pull in there because you're stuck until somebody comes out. So they, we call it a short term. They short turn to a parking lot. We're fine until we hit some, we hit an accident. No, it was hurt, thankfully. Did some damage to the bus, but it could have been a lot worse. Similar situation when you look at Fulton Mills. We have identified this as a safety issue. And my driver says, listen, this is a safety concern that we have. We have to pay attention to what our driver does this every day towards the route. And then, you know, we kind of hold it to them and say, okay, this really feels like the same type of situation, it's just not if, it's when we have a problem here. We don't want somebody to get hurt. We understand it's a, certainly is a, a different way of boarding the bus and maybe an inconvenience, but at the end of the day, if we're not operating safely, there's no sense of heading buses on the road. And it has to take priority from our perspective. We also know that the, the city police has done some research and they're concerned about us backing traffic up along this area a little bit. We understand that. That's, we do, we operate on streets, back up traffic all the time. It's an inconvenience. If there's a continuing issue, we will readdress, but we think at this point, we know we have an issue here. We believe we might have an issue here. I don't think we will, but we'll see how that goes. And we'll, the police department has some concerns. We'll, we'll deal with that.
Is there an actual time point at Fulton Mills?
Marking?
Is there an actual time point at Fulton Mills?
Yep.
So say quarter after that the bus is supposed to be there or after?
Correct.
So if there's a time point and people know they should be out there, they're not standing waiting for the previous time?
Correct. And we can have a monitor inside your lobby. It's, it's all web-based. As long as they have access to the internet, it'll show the predicted arrival time, not the scheduled, but the actual predicted by through an algorithm like Uber operates. And also a map showing where that bus actually is. So there's no need to be out there ten minutes before the bus is getting there. You can sit there and see it, go, okay, that bus is coming around the corner. I'm going to scoot out there and get to where I need to be.
What's the previous time point before the Fulton Mills? Are there any time points?
If you're coming from Walmart, the previous time point would be Fulton Commons.
Okay.
And if you're coming from this direction, if you're coming from the north, the previous time point would be Price Chopper. Now, all of our stops have predicted time points. Predicted times, right? But the time points are the fixed ones that the stops have their predictions based on.
Would it be possible if you were to go to the shelter at the Mills? It looked like a blue light there. So if someone's, if your driver's having a hard time seeing if someone's there waiting for, people are worried that they'll get passed by, just flip a light and a blue light comes out. So the driver can see there's someone there waiting for them.
I'll say this, if there's somebody waiting there and the driver goes by, I'm having a conversation with the driver. That shouldn't happen. They, they should be, that's their job. We try to keep the rides focused on the road, but their job is in a shelter. You need to see if there's somebody there. Yes, sir?
Frank Kibick, I'm a legislator.
Yes?
Most of these sites, my territory.
Yes.
Couple of questions. I saw your presentation as to why you say you're doing this. Have the, has any of this had to do with federal aid or state aid being cut? Or do you receive more state aid?
This has nothing to do with aid. Like I said, we're not reducing the level of service. We're reallocating. So the amount of money that we're spending on service now is the same amount we're going to be spending going forward.
That's the big, and we'll debate that at some point in time. But the reason I'm asking that is you say you're down to less than one person and that's why you did your reduction and so do it. Still, the point is you're eliminating some of the points where the biggest need for transportation has been moved. And if you're looking at people moving, I just don't see you, I see what you're saying about the Mills, what's going around the corner. And I can see about the people worried about having to stand. I see people standing at the corner of Fourth and Brad Street waiting for the bus. And you've got a camera in the north. You're letting people know in the Mills where the bus is, but to the person that's waiting to go to work at seven o'clock in the morning on Fourth Street and the bus is going to be a half hour late, they don't know that.
If they have our app? If they have our app? We provide as much technology as we can to make it as easy as possible.
I hear what you're saying, but we're talking about people to use the bus, ninety percent of them, okay? Our public assistance in one way shaped or another. To be late is one thing, to not show up is another thing. And I'll discuss that in my conversation at the end. But you're doing this and I see it ending at Walmart at four thirty in the afternoon. I mean, that's great for the shoppers, okay? But what about the people that are working? I mean, what do we supply for them? And I don't think OPT is going to pick up after four thirty in the afternoon for somebody that's working at Walmart and they don't get done until six o'clock. And we consider, assume to the fact that if somebody has any reason not to work, they'll not work. And if they don't have transportation, if they have to use a cab to get back home after being dropped off there, they won't, you know, cost them too much money. And I'm just looking at what you've cut back in the years, okay? And right now, you're stopping at four thirty in the afternoon at Walmart. Somebody that's working down at Pathfinder Courts, working at Walmart, he doesn't get done until six, seven o'clock. How are they going to get home? They take the cab, okay? Now, yes, OPT, you know, we do have the possibility of calling OPT and scheduling a cab or something like that. But this is stuff that, and I know that, you know, I want to ask you, I don't want to ask you the amount of money that you're receiving, but I know that it's allowed just some money because I see what the budget is, okay? It's county levels of what services that you're going to supply. And I'm thinking about the people going, I don't care if it's one, if one person, I want to know why that one person is not going to be coming back over here, okay? You cut it a long time ago because it used to be the month twelve o'clock at night.
Not in Fulton.
I guess it was when I was, when I was at city meeting back, it's good, it's good fifteen years ago.
I've been with Central for twenty-eight years. And the service at Fulton has never gone to eleven o'clock at night.
And Swigawood, not here.
Correct.
Okay. The, the mayor at the time lied to me when he said that they're cutting out services at Walmart, you know, people that are getting there to go to fly. I had a customer, I had a girl that, that worked over there. She said, they cut out my service. I have to leave my job. I can't, I can't work here till eleven o'clock. Now, I know that, you know, my neighbor over here, she's, she's a driver, so she would know the service, there was service of some sort there.
It's going at seven.
This can turn the, the questions I'm asking is if you're still going to receive same amount of money from the federal government, state government, okay? That's our taxpayer money and it's other, other, you get it from other state, you get it from the, the real property.
Yes, the mortgage recording tax. Yes.
Okay. You get money from that. That's all, that's still taxpayer money.
Correct.
And what we're looking for is, if you're going to cut back, seems to be if you've got the same amount of money coming in, why would you cut back? And I hear you, I hear you, you're saying, well, you got one person here. We used to have forty. We got one person over in this, we used to have twenty or thirty. Okay, and we're no longer going to go to the campus from inside the city, okay? I'll discuss that at Fulton Commons. Those are the questions I have. You're cutting it back. I don't agree with what you're cutting back. You said people in Mills weren't happy with you. And if you've been to any of the, you know, the transportation meetings, you know that I'm, you know, I'm not a cheerleader for Central.
I'm very well aware of that. I mean, but you know something? And I know, and I know that no matter what we do, we're not going to make everybody happy. That's not what, that's, that's the unfortunate thing.
I'm not going to make everybody happy.
I'll give you an example. You talk about funding and we can talk about that maybe outside. I'll just say this. In every, one of our, one of our funding mechanisms is called a nineteen B match. That is money that comes directly from the county to Central. Comes from Swigawood County, comes from Ondocket County, comes from every county. That, that amount has not increased a dime since the mid-nineties. Hasn't been adjusted for inflation, nothing. So the, my, so the thirty thousand dollars that we got from a particular county in nineteen ninety-two is the same thirty thousand dollars we get today. And when you index that for inflation, it buys a lot less. The cost of a bus in nineteen ninety-two was about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The cost for a bus right now is close to a million. So when that number doesn't increase over time and the cost of doing business keeps going up, it's hard to do what we can do. And we're not cut, like I said, we're not cutting service in Fulton. We're reallocating it. The amount of money we're spending, the amount of driver hours behind the wheel today is going to be the same in when we implement these changes. So the cost is the same. What we've done is we've turned to the state and said, we need more operating dollars. We've applied for grants to help pay for buses. We have gone to the federal government. The federal government in nineteen ninety-two used to pay for our operating costs. In nineteen ninety-five, they said, you need to go to the state for your operating costs. We'll pay for your hard goods, but we're not paying to operate the buses anymore. So now all that burden is on the state. So the finances have changed over time. We're doing the best we can to manage those finances and provide the best service we can for the majority of people that we operate. We can't keep everybody happy. It's not, the math doesn't work. So we're trying to do what we can to consolidate, again, expand in some areas where we can, where we think there's going to be opportunities. We're going to expand to serve Micron. We're going to serve Micron from Oswego County. We're going to run that bus that goes to Oswego, to Phoenix, to Syracuse, and it's going to deviate and go to Micron. Guaranteed that's what we're going to do. We already know what we're going to do there. So we're going to make sure we get people from Oswego County to Micron. It's going to cost us more money to do it. That's the right thing to do. So I think we do a pretty good job as a steward of taxpayer dollars. Okay? I know you're going to disagree with me.
Your opinion.
Okay. Any other comments? Questions? I mean, questions?
Is the bus that does this room wheelchair accessible?
Oh, yes. All of us are wheelchair accessible. Yes.
Okay. And so the on-demand service that you mentioned, how on demand is it?
That's not ours. That's OPT, Oswego County opportunities. But it is, I think there are some limitations to the service. I think they have some funding limitations. But they are, but Heather's doing the best she can to stretch the dollars as far as she can. And she serves a lot of the rural, more rural areas than we serve, mostly the more densely populated areas like Fulton and Oswego. You would reach, I can make, I can get you contact information for Heather's use.
I have it.
You have it? Okay, yeah.
My last question is what was the, when you were doing your research as far as ridership, what time period did you look at?
It was, what's that, twenty twenty-four?
The whole year.
Yeah, entirety, entirety of twenty twenty-four. Yeah.
Still have the call bus service.
And we still have call bus service. That's, you know, thank you for bringing that up. We still have call bus. And that's for individuals who physically cannot walk to bus stops, cannot physically cannot use the bus service. We have call bus. And you can, you apply, you have to fill out a portion of it. Your doctor fills out a portion of it. And then that is a on-demand door-to-door service where we come pick you up, take you where you want to go, as long as it's a location that we currently serve and during hours that we serve.
Twenty-four hours of that time?
And there's a twenty-four hour window, yes.
And what's the cost of the buses right now?
Cost is a dollar.
A dollar?
Yep.
Okay, say somebody, put me through that. I'm sorry. If somebody wants to get off at War Memorial, which sports at War Memorial all the time. If the bus is going to Walmart, can they ride back around and get off on that proper side of the road in front of War Memorial, which is down from Fulton Point?
So as long as they're not getting off the bus, it's a dollar.
Okay, so they can ride around Walmart and back and get off on that side of the road?
Yep.
Without an extra cost?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
As long as it's not that, so long as the driver is not then deadheading somewhere else from Walmart. So on occasion, that ball...
Yeah, they know it's going to tow back.
Correct.
Yes. So that driver could be taking his forty-five minute break, at which point the customer would not be able to stay on the bus.
They need to talk to the driver.
Right, exactly. Any other questions? Okay. At this point, I am going to officially open up the public hearing portion of our presentation. I know that many of you have signed up for the opportunity to speak. And that is going to go in the order in which I see individuals here. And Rhonda, you are first.
Rhonda Campita, South End World Councilor, the only person who will let the company our elected officials, Natalie Steve, our snow residents at the mills, discuss the issues with the community, the aid, as well as how it works, those security services. I think we can make what's being proposed workable. Had terrific experience communicating with Central, appreciate that, as well as her snow. I had a great experience with what ended up to be a change in command in the police department. Chief Dempsey, right on the ball, sent his staff over to monitor. It's not even a move exercise because he has a lot of new stuff. And we, maybe chief, had an opportunity to see for himself exactly what's going on there. And had to continue to monitor that situation. I feel as strongly as a counselor that we want to continue to have a good relationship with Central. Security and our core, not our technical services. And so whatever we can do is to, um, to advertise your app, the app, or any other thing that will continue to help the residents understand what the resources are for the ridership. Reasons is positive. If the residents of Mills aren't happy with you, that's my comment. I'll share that very good with you. But I believe strongly that they're better with service than without service, wherever it is. And we'll monitor that as the city and help operate and do a better on the backside of the regular work and other conditions to keep it clear for the smaller ones, since they do service the backside of the building, which your buses will go, I'll tell you, on the back sides. I think Chief Dempsey will continue to monitor traffic situations after that part of the circle, especially in bad weather conditions. So that's pretty much my take on it. We worked hard right from the get-go here this fall in conversation, collecting data, dealing with residents on that side of here. We know the fact that there are a few more housing companies in Fulton. Hopefully soon, sooner or later, I have a look forward to, you know, I'm going to say hopefully the organization making a little bit by this side where those housing developments will be. And hopefully elements will be, and then we include locations on all of it in there. Right, or sketchy, where it exists. So what are some of your thoughts? Appreciate the open, honest opinion you had.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you for your comments. Next on the list is David.
Also at the...
So you said what you wanted to say in the question. Okay, good.
All right.
Chris.
Yeah, Chris Dabbs.
Is this on the microphone?
Uh, it doesn't.
Good evening. I appreciate you guys coming in. I'm just gonna, at the end of September, I received an email from Steve in Central requesting, they're talking about some issues that they have and requesting that we do some type of traffic study over in the area of Fulton Mills. So I'll just go over the emails that were exchanged between us or some of them, if that's okay.
That's fine, yep.
And it'll encompass pretty much everything. So on September twenty-sixth, I was contacted by Steve and he just said, I'm sending you this email. I have to request the council, Rhonda Campita, who's been working with Central and Fulton Mill residents regarding the consolidation of our bus stops at Fulton Mills. Currently, Central has two stops serving this location, and he included maps. And then he included the times and where they're at, somewhere out front, somewhere out back. Our drivers have expressed safety concerns about accessing the back of the building. As you can see, there's a very sharp and narrow blind right-hand turn that they have to maneuver into the facility. It is impossible for us to make this turn without impeding an oncoming driver, or oncoming driveway. It's particularly dicey in winter weather when snowbanks further affect line of sight and narrow the road. Also, there are significant issues with regard to vehicles parking along the circle, blocking our large buses from making it around the circle. So if you bend down there, there's a circle at the end of the road. If you kept going straight, you'd go under the bridge. There's a little roundabout there that they turn around. We often have to wait for vehicles to move out of the way. Our solution would be to have all pickup and drop-offs performed at the front of the building along West First Street. In a meeting a couple of weeks ago at Fulton Mills, Lieutenant Marino had expressed concern about our buses blocking traffic along West First, though he was unaware that we currently perform this maneuver nine times each day. Having been at Central for over twenty-five years, he's never seen traffic, or blocking traffic from this bus location. The councilor Campita suggested that perhaps Fulton PD would like to observe our buses to see if there are any safety concerns. That is why provided specific times, we will welcome that assessment. As a New York State authority, we emphasize working with our community partners to ensure we are providing services that meet the community's needs and provides, provide safe, reliable, effective transportation services. To make the stops as convenient as possible, we would also install a bus shelter at this location to protect riders while they wait for our buses and also assist them in installing real-time information systems at Fulton Mills to reduce the need to wait very long in elements for our buses. I responded back, our team will attempt to monitor the traffic flow on West First Street during those times you have listed. And then I asked if there's a need to have fourteen stops throughout the day. I guess I didn't realize today, then you had it. You know, and I gave some timeframes. I see that almost every fifty minutes, with some being twenty-five, twenty-eight, thirty-one minutes apart. With nine stops being on West First Street already, what was the reason to have five more out in the back of the building? Again, I'm looking for answers. I'm guessing at one time, it was set up this way to try to limit the amount of stops on West First Street as it obviously is a main thoroughfare through the city. My main concerns would be during rush hours in the morning and afternoon, traffic backs up quite a bit, or quite quickly over there. And then I just, because a couple of weeks ago, I was on my way home. So I put in here a couple of weeks ago, I'm on my way home. From where, waiting on the bridge facing westbound in the left turn only lane on the Broadway Bridge, northbound traffic on West First Street was backed up through the intersection of West First Street and West Broadway at a standstill due to a bus being stopped on West First Street in front of Fulton Mills. The light turned green for westbound traffic on Broadway, but motorists had to wait until the intersection cleared out due to the bus stop. This would have been around four fifteen or so. I didn't know the date at the time, just, or at the time. This has a domino effect that this traffic on the bridge gets backed up even further than it already does. There are times of traffic, usually during rush hours, backed up all the way across the bridge and on State Group forty-one, southbound past Dunkin' Donuts and northbound past Harvins. Sometimes it's down past the police department. I'm not saying that this is due to Central bus stops on West First Street, but adding more stops on West First Street will play into these issues. The state will be changing the traffic pattern in the next year or so on West Broadway as they will be putting a traffic signal in at West Second Street. In my opinion, this is going to bottle up traffic even worse than it is now. The congestion in and around the intersections of West First Street through West Fourth Street could be extreme. Another issue with having a stop on West First Street is emergency vehicle access. It is a narrow two-lane roadway, one lane northbound, one lane southbound. Now starts to open up right there into two lanes for southbound with no shoulders to pull over onto. With a vehicle, let alone a bus, stopped in the roadway, this obviously restricts traffic flow and at times could make it impossible for emergency vehicles to pass through there. These are all things that we have to consider. We could possibly be creating or contributing to bigger issues over a widespread area by adding more stops on West First Street. I agree that snowbanks in winter weather do add challenges on Riverside Ave, but it adds challenges throughout the entire city as well. West First Street in front of Fulton Mills gets even more narrow due to the snow and congestion in that area even more, and congests that area even more. Probably isn't a viable solution due to the volume of traffic that exists. Again, we'll attempt to monitor for a possible solution. So the following Monday, I personally did the traffic study. So I went over there at the times that he listed, driving back and forth numerous times throughout the day. The first time I got over there was eleven eleven, no bus. At thirteen thirteen, one thirteen on Riverside, and these were just notes that I took. Bus on Riverside, no issues at the turn. Bus takes the turn faster than the two vehicles that came through the area in the fifteen minutes that I was there. That is not a knock at your bus drivers. I'm just, they were notes that I took. Bus did not stop, or, excuse me, bus did not stop, nobody to pick up. Thirteen forty-four, bus did not stop, nobody to pick up. Fourteen thirty-four, bus did not stop, nobody to pick up. And that patrol was unable to check the sixteen fourteen, seventeen forty-nine pickup times due to the volume of cars. And September thirtieth, the next day, eight oh four, bus did not stop, nobody to pick up. Nine oh one, bus on Riverside, no issues at the turn. Bus took the corner faster than the two other vehicles that were in the area while I was there. Bus did not stop as there was no way to pick up. Nine twenty-nine, bus did not stop, nobody to pick up. Ten forty-one, bus on Riverside making turn in the corner. There was a vehicle coming in the opposite direction and the bus and vehicle, no issues making the turn. Bus did not have, did not pick anyone up. So I witnessed a vehicle going north and yes, they had to swing out a little bit. The bus took the corner and they both handled the turn. I don't know, let's see. Eleven fifty-nine, bus did not stop, dropped off at West First Street Riverside. Thirteen thirteen, bus on Riverside, no issues at the turn. Took about three minutes to pick up one. Fourteen thirty-four, bus did not stop. Fifteen thirty-eight, bus on Riverside dropped two off, took approximately one minute. Sixteen fourteen, dropped off one, causing traffic to back up into the intersection of West Broadway. According to the patrol officer, she can see this being a big issue. Seventeen forty-nine, no bus came. On ten one, seven thirty-nine, bus on Riverside, no issues at the corner, picked up one, approximately thirty seconds. Eight oh four, bus picked up two, approximately one minute. Now, this is out in front of, on West First. Approximately one minute causing traffic to back up to the intersection of West Broadway. Vehicle attempting to turn off of the Broadway Bridge to go northbound on West First Street could not due to traffic backed up. Therefore, no westbound traffic behind this vehicle on the bridge was able to make the entire light cycle other than left turn only off of the bridge to travel south on West First Street. Nine oh one, bus on Riverside, no issues at the corner, picked up one, approximately one minute. That was the end of the study because I already saw enough in short time that I was monitoring this to see that this is going to be a problem, a further problem than we already have, in my opinion. So the email continues, while on Riverside Ave since Monday, I've not seen any vehicles parked in the turnaround. Boss said he was both the turnaround as well as the parking lot to turn around and head back north with no apparent issues. I've not seen any issues at the turn in the roadway. I have seen approximately five to six vehicles total driving in the area on Riverside Ave. Traffic is very limited on that roadway as opposed to West First Street and West Broadway. I agree that the turn on Riverside can be difficult at times and there's no doubt the caution needs to be used. From what I have observed here, drivers, there's extreme caution throughout the entire city, which is much appreciated. Since October of twenty twenty-one, and this is as far back as the stats will show us right now. And it doesn't count twenty twenty-five. Since October of twenty twenty-one, there have been zero reported motor vehicle accidents on Riverside Ave. Okay? So if we were having issues on Riverside Ave, and no doubt, I know the turn is difficult. But if we had cars stacking up and motor vehicle accidents, I would say we'd have to change something, but we don't. All right? Over the course of that same period, in the areas of concern that I listed in my previous email, there have been two hundred and four motor vehicle accidents with forty resulting in injuries. These stats do not include twenty twenty-five. I'm not saying that these are the result of Central bus stops. What I am saying is by adding additional traffic stoppages, it causes issues elsewhere throughout the surrounding roadways as it congests traffic even more than it already is, which then causes more motor vehicle accidents. The volume of traffic on West Broadway and West First Street is immense. On average, according to the DOT stats, in twenty twenty-four, from West First Street across the bridge to State Group forty-one, twenty thousand one hundred and thirty-nine vehicles passed for death. On West First Street from Shane, which is the one I... On West First Street from Shane, which is the O'Neal Street Bridge, to West Broadway, 8,058 vehicles passed through daily. On West First Street from Cedar to West Broadway, 11,132 vehicles passed through daily. From West Fifth Street to West First Street, 13,122 vehicles daily. This is an extreme amount of traffic traveling through those areas, which is where traffic is already an issue. I personally witnessed traffic being backed up through the intersection of West Broadway and West First Street due to the bus stop in front of Fulton Mills in just a short amount of time observing. Due to all these factors that must be taken into consideration, we, not just me as a team, as a command staff, we believe that it's much safer for everyone in the immediate and surrounding areas, including the bus drivers and passengers, to be picking up on Riverside Ave more often than Central currently does as opposed to the West First Street location. There was also mention in the previous email about putting up a shelter in front of Fulton Mills. This will surely add more pedestrian traffic to the area and more pedestrians lawyer in and around the shelter causing damage or other issues with residents of Fulton Mill Apartments. We have already seen this at another location right down here in Topa within the city. The shelter was repeatedly damaged, used as a place to sleep, and many issues arose from this shelter, which was then requested to be removed. If we add a shelter to this location, these issues will more than likely begin to occur there. I am 100% positive you will have issues there, okay? We have a homeless population unfortunately here, they will be taking advantage of that shelter. You will have problems, they will be bothering the residents of Fulton Mill Apartments just like they are bothering the residents of Topa. They're hanging out in the courtyard area, we're constantly going down there and telling them to leave. They're damaging your bus shelter as you're aware, it will cause an issue. I do understand and appreciate the concerns that Central has. Based on everything that I previously outlined, my recommendation would be to that all pickups are completed on Riverside Ave of the building. This is for the safety of all pedestrians, Central drivers and motorists, not just in the immediate area, but all surrounding areas that are already affected by the existing traffic patterns. The new traffic signal at West Second and West Broadway is undoubtedly going to cause significant traffic issues in the area. It is going to be a mess over there with traffic. The state is putting a traffic light in there, it's going to be an issue. Adding more traffic stoppages and more pedestrian traffic in front of Fulton Mills Apartments is likely going to cause far greater issues, not only there, but throughout many other areas of the city. I just, I don't, you can't tell me that it is safer to pick up on a State Group where you have those volumes of traffic than it is on Riverside Ave where there is limited traffic. I know it's difficult for your drivers to maneuver that turn, I understand that. But we're asking for problems if a bus stop out in front of Fulton Mills unless it's further down the road. If it's too close to that intersection, I think it's 68 yards from the intersection, something like that. It's just, we already have numerous issues with traffic in and around the area and this is going to affect it even more. I would recommend that it doesn't get put there. You know, maybe it can go out back a little bit further north of where the pickup is and then you can utilize the parking lots to turn around and watch your buses doing that on multiple occasions. And then you don't have to worry about the roundabout or cars being parked there. Maybe that's a solution. Maybe it's something, you know, the snowbanks, maybe it's something that DPW, we can have them check it weekly and make sure they're chopping them down when they come in. I think this is a mistake and I appreciate your service, I really do. I'm sure the residents of the city appreciate it as well, but I just, I think this is going to be a huge mistake.
Thank you, Councilor, I appreciate it.
Where do you put the signal light?
West Second and West Broadway. Where they took it out years ago, yeah. No, that's going to be a mess.
Is anybody else who'd like to speak?
Sarah, you go first, ladies first.
I'll speak on. Just after hearing what you had to say, I just wanted to comment how many times the bus went by Fulton Mills without stopping. Elderly people take a little bit of time to get out there to, and how can the bus see? Because I know that there's a little bit of obstructed view to be able to see if somebody's coming out the door to get on the bus. Whereas if they were around the back, the door is right there and they can see the bus coming down and they can get out and I'm sure the driver can see them a lot easier on the back side than the front side.
You know, our system is designed not to stop every bus stop. It's, we are, like in every location that we serve, people stand at the bus stop. Otherwise, we'd be stopping at key doorways all the time.
Understandable, but seniors who have always had the bus, come around the back and have always gotten on the bus on the back and now the bus, it's a different system for them and it will take them some getting used to. But they also, it's a longer walk for them to get out there and it's a busy road and, you know, I just see that some people might be missing the trips. I think it's on the script, I think it's absolutely having more routes that are going through. So people have, you know, they know that it's that hour or 80 minute loop, you're going to get more ridership. That might be part of the reason why you don't have people going out, only one rider to the college because how long was the route before and did they have to change buses? But if it's on a constant loop, you might get more people that, you know, seniors not going to want to be at all for two hours doing their shopping, but if they know the bus is going to be coming back and around in that 45 minutes, then you might get more ridership on that. Just my perspective, I think if you can have one rider on there, it's getting one person where they need to be. And so many times our elderly are overlooked because they, they're a smaller population or they don't look, they're not looked at as important as somebody that's going for their job to earn some money. So I just wanted...
Can you have anything?
Oh, sorry, Sarah Sunday.
And just something that, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Just something, and I hope the times like how long you talk in there to show that, you know, stops on West First Street, it might only be a minute, but that's already backing up through the intersection. So now if you add more people or, you know, more people to pick up or potentially somebody in a wheelchair, you know, that one take a little bit longer. Now that pickup takes longer and traffic backs up even further through that intersection where we already have numerous issues. So that's why I think the times.
Again, I appreciate the comments. Anybody else like to speak, anybody else?
I'd put a question mark.
Okay.
But I'll talk.
What was your name again?
Frank Castillo, County Legislature, 25th District. I, so many people had their different ideas. Sarah hit on one that I already mentioned. Rhonda, Councilor, she hit on a point. But the situation is such that I was on the original committee looking into issues with stop poverty in Surco County. And it was brought up at numerous meetings. That it's great to have jobs, but the most important part of having jobs is having a need to get to those jobs. And transportation is the most important thing. Sarah has seen me many times talk about the need for transportation. The elderly, they can't get to the bus stops on time. Chief Dempsey said, "The bus didn't stop, the bus didn't stop." If the bus didn't stop, that stop wasn't early for its next stop. And if it's early for its next stop, the person that is going to get out of it at the next stop may not be out there because it's not the scheduled time he's supposed to be there. So therefore, they may go on for that next one. But if it's a nice day, beautiful sunshine day, the elderly can get out there in the wheelchairs or with their walkers and stand there and wait. If it's snow, if it's bad weather, they're not going to. So the ridership may go down because of the possibility of inconsistency, not on, you know, any schedule or anything like that, but on the point that it's just, you know, we had a bad day, it was snow, we were stuck. Chief Dempsey brings up points about the difficulties of picking up on certain locations. Being a bus driver for the city school district, I know that that, on West First Street there, we used to do a pickup just down a little bit further. Same thing would happen, you'd have to wait for a parent to come out. We get there early, we have to wait, we wait a certain length of time and then we move on. But in the meantime, buses, you know, traffic is getting backed up. But, you know, if it's, you're cutting out a certain area, and I hear what you're saying, but I gotta say this one thing before I forget it because I will forget it. I'm at the age where if you don't say it, you forget it. Back when Central was changing their bus schedule, it was the year that the CEO had received just a big bonus and cut out, transferred, you know, a route here in Fulton. And I was livid at the meeting when they came down, you know, they had their public hearing and I brought it up. You're cutting out service to us and you're giving out bonuses to your upper, you know, upper people. Not you guys, but, you know, the upper ones, okay? So my point was, we need the service. Now if you go on to, what Rhonda brought up is that we want to keep a good relationship with you. Now you know me, you know, you've been to any one of the meetings. We are a customer, okay? And I'm not very sure, but I think you have to service us. May not have to service us all the certain way, but I believe that because we're a city in Fulton, okay? With a population, you still have to supply us with some service, okay? And the services that we need are the ones that supplied to everybody, not just a select few. The problems are, somebody wants to get a job, wants to get to a job, or wants to get to the college. It's not like, everybody calling ancient times, where, okay, I'll walk to work, okay? Or I'll walk to the job, okay? I'll walk to school. It's not in the people anymore. They want the transportation and Sarah will probably agree with me that if you get one person off of public assistance, it saves the county, the state, the federal government a lot more money than it costs for a bus to go around the city and go into that stop. It will, okay? You know that and I know that, okay? And if we can get 10 people, that is astronomical. And I have never heard a bad thing about Central buses, riding them, never have, okay? So it's not a point of that you don't, the services you supply are not good and the drivers are not good. Okay, because my driver, my next door neighbor, I guess, used to be one of those drivers, okay? So I know that she was a very good driver. The point is, you have to look at taking care of the people. I look at, everybody's in my district, I look at all the people in the whole county because I know how important transportation is. The one issue that I brought up, and Sarah heard me bring it up at the one meeting, so did David, that I have a neighbor, she used to be a neighbor from us. She used to take the bus, Central bus, from Fulton up to Home Depot on Route 31. In the summertime, and now enough has changed, but in the summertime, the bus used to go down to Home Depot to drop her off. But in the wintertime, they didn't. They'd go right straight through on 57. Now it's one day, she went to work, walked from 57 up to Home Depot. Got out of work, came back down and waited for the bus. And it was a bus, it was a storm that day, a snowstorm that day. She waited at that corner for a good half hour. She called my wife, says, "I've been here waiting for the bus, it hasn't come." Then she looks and see the route had been canceled because of the storm. Now, is that your fault? No, it isn't. But reflects on the service, this is a person that is not on public assistance because she makes just a little bit too much to be on public, but she wants to keep working. She could say, "No, I'm not going to, you know, I'm not going to walk from 57 down to Home Depot." And all of a sudden, bingo, bango, we're back on public assistance. Costs us a lot of money. She didn't, but she never got a notification out. Never got a notification. And I, that's a service that you would have to look at doing some way, shape or form to allow people. If you had a bus driver pick up one person and drop a person off somewhere, they know that that person's going to be coming back. They come back every day with them and now all of a sudden you cut the route out, okay? Something has to be done. I don't know if they register their telephone number or something like that, but there has to be a way to help them out. And as far as OPT, okay, I'm the man, okay, the call for OPT, as far as I know, you can call and you'll get the OP, you know, they will, Sarah, I mean, Heather has done an excellent job. She's been a godsend to Surco County with, you know, the trans mobility management. I don't know how much she's going to pick up of your routes that you guys is going to cancel. I'll ask it to her by then. One of the meetings, I believe, somebody said to me, "Well, they're going to put in, they're going to put back in the Cuber County, Cuber Community College." You know, they, it may look like they were going to give it, but they were going to put it back in. So now you're saying it still is out. But if we got one student that wants to better themselves, okay? It doesn't take much for their student to say, "If you don't care, I don't care, okay? I'm one of the ones that cares." And that's why, you know, the people will fight, "Why aren't they here tonight?" At 4:30 meeting, they're not going to come today, okay? They're not going to, "Is there a bus coming down here? Is there a guy down here today?" You know, those are all issues that transportation is going to become more and more prevalent in this county with if micro-norm does get here and when they do get here, okay? And you're going to have to have more routes going there, coming back and forth. Should have had, you know, routes going into the Amazon, we have an Amazon store that's supposed to be a godsend in Dyer County. I don't know how much, you know, they put in, you know, it's very important. You guys' transportation is very good, don't get me wrong. It's just that you've got to be sure that you keep the service. We are a customer, okay? And we, we could demand everything we want, okay? But you can say no to it, okay? I know, and I know, if you know it, I tried to get money to say, "Let's not get, start giving the money to Central, let's get another transportation company in here, okay?" We used to have Fulton and Surco, transportation went up the service. You guys bought them out and then we went away from that. But, you know, it's something that this city needs. And as far as the little hub, little area that we had, yeah, we had the problem down here. And that's a little B, you put it over there, what I call them is the smokers to sit out there. Who's going to take over that bus, you know, bus stop? Who's going to take over that bus, you know, bus stop? The smokers are. And the people that don't smoke aren't going to go in there because they don't want to be around all the smoke. It's a good, great idea and yes, it would be wonderful. But I'm sorry, that location, right there. Yeah, I think even the used car salesman, used car lot, you know, kick them off their lot, okay? But you're trying to do what is the most logical thing for you guys to do. And what I'm saying is, when it comes to transportation, the logic has to be thrown out and what the need is, is what you have to go with, okay? I have two people, that's two people that will be getting to a shopping, will be getting to a job. And that's what we're here for. That's all, you know, I mean, these guys, you know, it's not a case of we don't want you, we need you, but we need you to do what is best for everybody, not just a few. Thank you very much.
Appreciate your comments. Anybody else like to speak?
Just had a question.
Sure.
Mexico bus, are there the 40 footers you use on Mexico?
Uh, I think it's a 30, is it, is it a 40 footer all the time?
I'm just saying.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I don't think it's a 40 footer all the time. They may change.
Because I mean, the 30 footers can go around that loop with that easier than the 40 footers. Because I used to drive a 40 footer.
Wait, the Fulton Mills area?
Yes.
Yeah.
The 30 footers can make it around.
That was going to be my question. I appreciate that. First, they have smaller buses.
My question is.
Do we have capacity? Are we filling buses? The answer is no.
Can they use the parking lot and not turn around at Fulton Mills? I know you prefer not.
I'm going to, let's, let me do this. I want to close the public hearing.
Sorry.
So I can engage in Q and A.
Yep.
Okay? So at this point, if anybody wants to add something into the record or public comment. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing now at 5:51 PM.